2021, we'll call the meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please. Ed?
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item for discussion this morning is a discussion of our city boards and commissions, and we'll call on Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning. Happy Hollow Week to all of you. This is like 50% update and 50%, I need some guidance from you on the board and commission updates. So it's going okay. We have narrowed down some of the boards and commissions, the number of people that we're going to be having on them, and like the number of times that they're meeting per year, et cetera. We're keeping some of them essentially the same, but one of the issues that we're running into currently is maybe like a misunderstanding between how the boards and commissions assume that they operate versus how council maybe wants them to operate. So I just want to get some clarity on what you'd like to actually see happen in reality. So we have several boards and commissions that over the last few years have like established their own mission statements, and they they set their own work, and they have things that they want to do, but it's not coming from council. It's coming basically bottom up from these groups who are who are doing these things. And then you see stuff like like with the Heritage Preservation Commission, if they come forward with a project idea that maybe you've never heard of. So I'm just wondering, like, is is that how you would like these boards and commissions to operate? Do you want them to be setting their own work and then coming to you with their suggestions? Or would you prefer that council is setting the work for the boards and commissions and then calling on them when needed? Discuss.
I guess, can it can it go both ways? Because I don't always know what needs to be worked on or what is being worked on or should be. And then it's nice if those boards and commissions can come to us and bring that information or if they can do it, you know, ahead of time and then we discuss. I mean.
I would agree. I don't think we want a dictatorship. So I mean, I think I think it's, I would agree with Krista, sort of a, it should be a two-way street.
And if we can, I mean, then if there's things that the council would want to see, we can always go that direction as well.
Okay.
I guess the other thing is if they have a mission statement, I would kind of like to see what it is.
Yeah.
So we can see what actually they want to do, and if it's what we want them to do, fine. If not, then we make suggestions.
So one thing we did, like with the current version of code that we're working on, the draft we have right now, we did remove the requirement for annual updates because just it's not really happening. Would you like that to remain so that there is some connection with the boards and commissions? Or how do you want to, how do you want the communication to work?
I think they should come before us once a year and tell us what's going on with their with their boards.
Okay.
So that we know.
So maybe we designate like one either committee of the whole or meeting a year when a representative from each group comes and we just have that be like a standing thing.
Yeah.
So they're not setting their own, because that's obviously not working.
Did you say if you spread them out across the year, you know, so that they're not all in one month?
I don't think we need all of them at one time.
Not all at one time.
If we spread them out over.
Okay.
A year's time.
Okay. I can work with that. Any other thoughts?
When you said just because the annual updates aren't happening, wouldn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't still ask for them. So I don't think it would be something you'd want to just remove and say, we don't need these anymore, when we'd still like to have them.
Okay.
If they just don't do them, well, then we need to still ask.
Okay.
And I think it should be that we do wish to empower them to kind of come up with suggestions, because if, otherwise, there's no, there's little point in having them if they can't be kind of self thinkers. And and obviously, they're passionate about whatever committee they're on, so hopefully they they're bringing something that benefits this community.
Yep. Good. Okay. Well, we will keep working on our update. We're going to probably put the annual updates back in then, and we can, Lynn and I can figure out dates and times and things for like actually having stuff happen at certain points. This is good. Thank you very much. If you have any other questions or ideas, just send me an email or give me a call. Thanks.
Thank you, Clara. All right. Item number two is an update on the Aquatics Center proposal, and we'll call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, good morning, Your Honor, council members. Filming in for Brian this morning, so bear with me, and he'll be available Monday to answer questions you might have that I can't answer. But as you recall, a few weeks ago, Bridgette gave a good report from the committee, and essentially asked the council to get another proposal to give this a final look or a second look. And that's what's before you this morning. Boltman Mink, being the lead of the team that we put together, is proposing that they will do civil site analysis at Roosevelt Park, which is a proposed site. They will review the feasibility report and provide concept and site planning. They will also review the business plan and operations analysis that were previously completed by U.S. Aquatics. A few comments. It took a long time to find a qualified team because there's not a lot of people that do this work, so that was the delay. But I feel like we have the right team identified with the right skill sets. And second of all, on their initial review, so they could put this scope and proposal together, a lot of things jumped out at them that they really want to tackle and they think may be not in final form for the city to be able to go out and educate and give factual information to the voters. So there is, I think, a need to do this work. This will allow deliverables, allow enough information and facts that we can tell the general public exactly what they would be voting on next November in relation to this project. And the amount proposed to do this work is $10,300. So what we're going to be asking the council on Monday night, assuming you guys move this forward, is to initiate Public Improvement 9504 and to accept this professional services proposal in the amount of $10,300. If you read the proposal, you'll see that there's also a second task, and I just wanted to clarify that that's related to work that the Fergus Falls School District is doing. Since the last time Bridgette presented to you folks, we had an internal meeting with some representatives from the school district who know that at some point in time, they have to do something related to their pool. And so they think that it makes sense to at least explore while the city's working through this, whether or not there can be some synergies or some partnerships in relation to their potential future project and the project that we're working on as well. So that's what this is related to. You know, they would need an indoor facility. They're thinking if if it all works out, and then that's the direction they decide to move, we could share concessions, locker rooms, changing rooms, some of those other things that would end up saving cost for both entities. So just at a high level, there's been no commitments made, no decisions made, but that's what that second half of this proposal is for, and that will be up for the school district's consideration. So any questions? I will answer them. Otherwise, that's really the high-level task here at hand, and the deliverables should be very helpful for the general public.
Thanks, Andrew. Anthony?
Obviously, with the Bolton and Mink, that's, how does this, is this kind of like, you know, fall into the, obviously, the downtown river thing? Is this commitment that we are not just giving it to them, or did we look for alternatives?
Well, so Bolton Mink's, the only piece that they're doing is the civil work, and theirs is only $1,000. So it's really just a tiny piece of the pie. Anybody, I think, could do that, any engineer. But what they did for us, because we're actively working with them on this other project, is we asked them, who does this work? Because we can't find firms that are qualified. And so they they really hit the road and put a lot of work in behind the scenes to identify these three other sub consultants. So they're kind of playing lead consultant, but really a small piece of it. So I, I mean, I would say, yes, we probably went this direction because of the close relationship we've had recently, but I don't think that they stand to gain a lot by this contract.
Any other questions? Someone like to move this forward to the council?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Item number three is a discussion on some budget adjustments, and we'll call on our Finance Director, Bill Songmore. Morning, Bill.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. So in your packet, put a memo just outlining some budget adjustments. These are similar to what we see periodically throughout the year. The first one, we've received some additional funds that weren't budgeted for firefighter training. So our fire department goes through various training, submits those expenses to the state. We get reimbursed for that. So that's what that is, just moving the other state aids and grants up and then the fire department training budget up. Then just a reallocation from our general government buildings, basically the city hall budget, over to the fire department budget for $3,0939. And that is to cover part of the HVAC system that was replaced. It's a rooftop unit over the meeting room over at the fire hall. They're both property tax levy-supported buildings, and that's why we will move funds from our general, general government buildings, we call it, city hall budget. We'll do that for the senior center sometimes, too. We will not do that like to a water plant or a sewer plant, because those are supported by enterprise revenue. So we kind of, it's kind of a catch-all. The city hall buildings budget, we call it general government buildings, and that's why we move some to the fire department. Forfeitsures, police department, they collect various forfeitures revenue, and we're required by state law to account for that in a separate account. So we don't budget for anything there as we start the year, and as those forfeitures come in, we move up the revenue, move up the related expense, so the police can use those funds. Library received donations so far this year of $5,747. They're just general donations for books and programming. So again, revenues, expenses, just so they can use those funds. And then Brian worked with the state of Minnesota and receiving some more coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations of $36,378, and that'll be used for street maintenance. You could choose a couple of things related to streets, but he put it all into street maintenance is his plan. So again, moving up the revenue and the related expense. And then the last one, as you know, as we put together the 2021 budget, we were anticipating a large loss of local government aid of about 20%, so that's the $791,939. Thankfully, we did not lose any aid this year. So looking at moving that back to the certified level, and then to compensate for that, we were going to use $300,000 of fund balance from the general fund and make an additional $200,000 transfer from the liquor store. We don't need to do that either, so now I'm going to take those away. So just kind of setting those back to what's actually happening is what I'm putting here. Now, that does leave some surplus there that will certainly stay in the general fund right now, and I know we'll be getting the tax levy committee back together in November as we prepare for our December presentation, and we may talk about that a little bit at that time, too. So but at least this, I kind of wanted to get those LGA levels set back and then not using our savings, in essence, this year, which is, that's very good news, because we were pretty worked up as we put together that 2021 budget. So very pleased how it's coming out, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill? Someone like to move, we bring this to the council on Monday?
Put that on the consent agenda.
Sure. Thank you, Tom.
One second.
Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. And last item on our agenda is an overview of Ordinance 15, 8th Circuit, and we'll call on our city planner, Karen Flom. Morning, Karen.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor, and city council members. I was asked to give an overview of Ordinance 15, which is some proposed changes recommended by our planning commission to our zoning code, covering topics including permitted and conditional uses in our business and industrial zones, fences, and accessory buildings. And so I'm going to walk through each of those categories and just summarize those changes, how they're different, and sort of the recommendation and why those were made. So beginning with the uses category, just to sort of set the stage, when we talk about permitted and conditional uses, a permitted use is something that's just allowed by right. If someone meets all the other requirements of the zoning code, they don't require any other additional permissions from the planning commission or the city council to do that thing. Whereas a conditional use, they have to go in front of the planning commission and by extension, the city council to get permission. So conditional uses are things that, you know, might be appropriate for a particular location, but a government might want some more control over how those uses operate, and that process also allows the planning commission and the city council to put additional parameters through the application process. So for the new permitted uses that are being included in the ordinance, these are things that Darren, the source well planner, would frequently receive questions about, but didn't necessarily have a match in our current use table. So that's how those new permitted uses were were thought about. For the uses that are being moved from the conditional category to the permitted use category, those are things that historically a community might have felt more of a need to to have a little bit more control and say over. But, you know, now in kind of more modern times, our original zoning code is from 1965. You know, there might be other ways that those uses have been controlled or have additional health and safety oversight. With the zoning code as well, our zoning districts, particularly our business and industrial zones, have some interconnections. So what might be permitted in one business district is just sort of by default mentioned, and another business district is being allowed, or industrial as well. So by making these changes to these permitted and conditional uses, it's also going to allow those in in other districts as well. So overall, you know, kind of allowing some more of those commercial uses in the industrial zones. For our fences, those changes, we receive a lot of calls about fences and sheds. That's kind of the the most common community resident questions that we receive. Our current ordinance, when it comes to fences, I summarize this as, yes, you can build a fence, and that's it. And so fences, we often receive calls and our causes of disputes between neighbors. And so the hope is by putting some more parameters on fences, similar to other communities, that we can, you know, just put some more guide rails on fence construction. So some of the changes would be a two-foot setback from any property line. That would be five feet setback for an alley, just for safety and site concerns. A fence would have to be limited to six feet in height in a residential zone. It would have certain exceptions if a property line shares a boundary with a business or an industrial zone. In those situations, someone would be able to build an eight-foot fence along that boundary. For business or industrial zones, the fence height limit would be 10 feet. Fences in the front yard would have to be 50% opacity and be a decorative quality. And so the zoning code specifically says things like a picket fence, split rail fence, iron or brick, and specifically says that a chain link fence is is not a decorative fence. We also retained a site triangle for our corner lots, again, just for a safety concern, but the language was hopefully simplified a little bit from our current existing code, just to make that easier to understand. We do not currently have a zoning review permit for our fences, and the new proposal for these fence rules does not include one. But building code is a little bit different, so building code does require a permit for any fence that's over seven feet in height. For accessory buildings, we did have existing rules saying where those could go, how big they could be. But over the years, there's sort of been some conflicting requirements that have been incorporated into the code, and some people have viewed it as overly restrictive. And the previous planner also felt that the code was leading to a lot of our variance requests, and so simplifying those rules and setting those out to sort of address those concerns. So some of the changes that are there, it would allow detached accessory buildings to be constructed anywhere in the side or the rear yard. So you can think of anything behind the front of the house as being where a detached accessory building could be built. Currently, it's limited to the rear one-third of the rear yard. We also have a provision in the proposal that would allow accessory buildings to be constructed in the front yard if you're on a water lot. That was another common variance request. The only difference here is that in those situations, a structure like a garage or a shed would have to observe all the primary structure setbacks. So as an example, in the front yard, that's usually 30 feet for our R1 district, whereas otherwise, an accessory building could be built within five feet of a parcel line. It clarifies the maximum building height of an accessory building, so that was another conflicting provision that we had. It also specifies that an accessory building can only be constructed after something like a home or a primary structure is built, unless they're permitted at the same time. And the other change is to the maximum size allowed of accessory structures. So that was currently 30% of the rear yard size, but that's now being changed to 10% of the lot size. And the RA zone, which is our agricultural residence district, has a different provision where 5,000 square feet of accessory buildings would be allowed to be constructed. There's also a conditional use permit being added for pool buildings or post-frame construction to have that reviewed by the planning commission and to ensure some more harmony with surrounding neighborhood design. So those are the changes that are included in the proposal. These were recommended by the planning commission at their September meeting, and then was included in the October 4th city council packet, where the city attorney was directed to draft those ordinance changes, and the first reading was held last week. So I am happy to answer any questions. We also do have the vice chair, Laurel Kildee, available today as well, if you have any questions for the planning commission members. So with that, thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Karen. I know the planning commission has put a lot of work into this, and it's very much appreciated to clean up some of this language. So thanks, Laurel.
She's been wonderful.
Yeah.
A big asset, so thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Karen. Questions?
I got one question. Obviously, on the chain link fence, there are a number of those already in existence. Are we grandfathering those in?
Yep. So Minnesota statute with nonconformities, if something was constructed before changes to zoning code, it's allowed to continue.
That's pretty much the same. I got several of them in my word. We got the chain link fences out front, and I don't know if I heard it right. Did you say that a property line fence has to be off the property line?
Correct. So one of the recommendations is that the boundary line fences would be prohibited, so any fence would have to be two feet, any new fence would have to be two feet off of the property.
So if you had two neighbors who wanted to put up a fence, you'd have a big gap running up the middle of them?
Correct.
I don't know if I like that.
Unless you could get both neighbors to agree, I suppose, and then you could have to go for a variance.
Who's going to vote? Yeah. And to me, that just, you know, you start going down the street, and I mean, usually it's pretty good. One person can hook up to another person's, and you end up with one fence. I mean, the only time you run across it is I had one woman who had a major issue, because when I built this fence, he supposedly put the ugly side facing out, and she didn't like that. And, you know, she, that was about the only problem she had. But I mean, to me, I mean, property line fences have always been like right on the property. And it's just kind of leaves you that big gap in the middle that kind of look odd, as far as I'm concerned.
Laurel, did you guys?
We talked about it, and I don't want to tell anybody under the question, we're Johnsons or we're Litter on our committee. And Pitt's concern was the ability for people to maintain the fence, the opposite side of the fence, without going on their neighbor's property line. We had it as a boundary line, and it got changed at the last minute after Vern's concern. I think you would have a, he probably would not agree, but I think everyone else, and Karen, is that your take, too, that it seemed everyone else was amicable to a boundary line? The other number that was thrown out was one foot off. But that that's where the concern came from, was going to maintain the other side, and the concern that if only one person had a fence, if you put it right on the boundary line, he raids, all of a sudden, that neighbor has to weed whack a boundary line he never had to weed whack before. And so he thought that the person putting the fence up should have to maintain that grass or that side of the yard, you know, trespassing. I fully understand what council member Thompson is saying, but that's how the conversation went.
Have we ever had an issue with that before? People trespassing to paint their fence or talk their friends into doing it for them?
It was my second day here was one of the first calls I received.
So it is a thing?
Yes.
Oh. The other side of that is, too, homeowners are going to sell, and new homeowners are going to come in, and now they have this fence line, and the new homeowner doesn't abide by the agreement the previous ones did, and I lean my stuff up against this fence that he owns, but is on the property line. So I think making sure the fence is on your property with access to care for the other side makes sense. I get your point, but, you know, when people sell and people buy, they're going to be binding into an agreement for this fence line that they maybe don't otherwise want to have. So I think, I think it makes sense. It's pretty clear who owns the fence and who can maintain it without having a mutual dispute between neighbors, but.
Neighbors came in and wanted to put the fence right on the fence line, and they asked to do that. Could that be done?
Under our current ordinance, you mean?
Yes.
Yes. We have no rules in the current ordinance about where a fence could go.
But in the new ordinance, because they get an exemption to put that fence line if they're amicable to do it between them.
There's nothing in the proposal that would allow that, no.
That's something that you, as a council, could add, though.
Correct.
If you wanted to add a provision that said if neighbors on both property lines agreed to put it on the property line, you know, we could have that flexibility.
I think, I think that should be added.
I mean, other than, of course, the two neighbors that one of them moves, and then you get Tom moved next door, and, you know, he may not be as amicable, you know?
Can, so.
I don't know about the legalities of it. I mean, but is there something that can be put in there when it's on the property line that neighbors have to allow, you know, the person over here who owns the fence, access just for maintenance only in order to, no? Okay.
So what about the the properties that are essentially narrow lots, right? That if you put a fence two feet in, you're like on the house?
If you're 50 feet, and you put two feet either side, you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that, to me, that that's where it could be an issue.
Laurel, did you have a comment?
What I talked about two feet was if the lot line was unclear, we're not up against a survey, you know, that kind of a thing? That gets a little bit of wiggle room for where people think their property line is versus where their property line also is. Partly, I think we brought up, could we do a conditional use permit if you want to be closer to the lines than two feet? And that would be like the lot size that you talked about was raising, too.
So, and I think that could be handled by Jim's comment of just having an agreement between, that would, a conditional use permit?
To clarify, a variance. It would be a variance from the, yep. That would be possible. It just adds more work for property owners to to have that requirement.
And cost.
And cost.
You know, the other, like, if I look at my own home situation, I don't like to do that with public policy, but I think there's others like mine. There's, you know, I have a fence that a neighbor put up on one side that's on the property line. If I wanted to fence in my yard now at two feet in, all of a sudden, we have corners that aren't square. And if the other neighbor fenced in, you know, it just starts looking goofy when some fences are on the line, some are two feet in, and all of a sudden, there's nothing square about anybody's yards. And if I have to go all the way around to mow, and everybody else is fenced off, I don't know how I'm going to do that, but.
Do other communities have?
I think it's around, all around the board.
It's around the board.
And I think the problem is we've got too many fences that exist, you know, that are on property lines.
Fences make good neighbors, right?
That would be the kind of thing, is like, it would test the enabling enablers, her people.
So do we want to move this to the council, have some time to consider it, and make any adjustments to the to the ordinance with the input of the planning commission on Monday night? Is that, I mean, we're kind of taking some of this in for the first time?
Well, Your Honor. We've got a few more comments to make.
Karen mentioned, you know, we did hold the first reading on this, so it's ready for a final vote if the council feels it is. And we talked about it at post-council and said, I think there's things in there they may not fully understand, because I think the calls will start as soon as we put these things into place, and there'll be frustrations.
I think at least we should add the language that if there's mutual consent on the existing neighbors to to build on property line.
Yep, I agree. Yep, I agree.
And maybe we should add something about, you know, the neighborhood, because as you say, if, if you've got a row of fences, you know, if every other house has a fence, and then all of a sudden, you're going to now do these setbacks, it's going to look really odd.
And also, can we do it in a way that doesn't require, like, if it, like, the mutual consent is just a signed piece of paper that doesn't add a lot of burden or cost to anybody? Like, it doesn't have to?
Correct.
If two neighbors came in and they both signed off?
A signed piece of paper that's, that's just part of the process?
There was, in one of the previous drafts of the ordinance proposal, was some similar language to that effect. And other communities that do permit boundary line fences have similar language that we could also replicate.
I think that alleviates a lot of the concerns we have.
So, Your Honor, council members, we'll, we'll put some proposed language together, and if, we'll bring it to council on Monday, and if it's in an acceptable form, you guys can vote on it then. If not, we can, you know, take as much time as we need to do that. It's kind of, we're getting to the end of the fence building season, so we have a little bit of time. If you feel like the planning commission needs to weigh in again, we can certainly do that.
I don't think you're going to get objection, is my bet on that, because it was something we kept going back and forth on. So I, to me, I think you're addressing the issue in a way that makes sense and that you're not going to have any feedback coming from the planning commission going, no, no, this doesn't make sense. So I mean, to me, keep moving in the direction.
Okay. So we'll propose language. If the council likes it on Monday night, they can act. If not, we'll come back and try again.
Just for the record, Laurel's my neighbor, and we don't have any fences between our houses.
Not yet.
This is all for questions.
Wait till, wait till that 15-foot boundary one comes in.
And the boy fends at eight foot.
You don't even have to pull vault over that thing.
Scott has one. Oh, yeah. Scott, go ahead.
Two specific comments to make. First of all, on this section one, lot line setback question, I think the best bet for us at this point is just to drop that entirely, because it's going to create more problems than it solves. We're going to end up with these dead zones between lots, and we're going to have all the problems that have been described here. I think if we just do not even say this at all and leave things as is, we're going to be better off than trying to implement this two-foot setback deal. I think this is going to create a lot of trouble. And so as you're looking for ways to bring this to us on Monday, I'd say leave this out entirely. That would be my suggestion. Second, go ahead.
Make a motion to that effect and see if the rest of the council agrees.
Okay. I'll make a motion to that effect, and then I still have some other things I want to talk about. So I'll make a motion that we drop 21E1, that section.
Someone like to second that, and then Scott? Thanks, Brett. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
As far as any more comment on the motion, I've said what I need to say.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and just finish your comments, and we'll vote on, because we're going to just vote to bring this to the council.
Okay. My other comments have to do with the next, another point, a different point on fencing height. So I think it's a separate question. If we could just decide to drop this lot line setback, yes or no, and then we can move to that separate question, I think that would be a little cleaner.
Okay. Well, so the motion is to bring this ordinance to the council with the lot line setback dropped. All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And you had some other comments, Scott?
Yeah. On the fencing height question, under 5A, in residential zones, fences may be located in any yard up to a height of six feet tall. Fences in the front yard must be a minimum of 50% opacity. Well, I believe the word ought to be maximum of 50%, 50%. I can't imagine a split rail fence even being 50% opaque. So I believe it's a typo. The word ought to be maximum rather than minimum. And then as far as the question of six feet tall, I think a six-foot tall fence in a front yard is out of place. And so on the yard, on the side yards, on the backyard, six feet, that's fine. But a six-foot fence in the front yard, I think, would really look silly. And I would not be in favor of that.
So how's the wording on, how's the wording on the, because different settings obviously are different, like if you have a?
Up to a height of six feet.
So it's in any yard up to a height of six feet tall, but it doesn't specifically say front, back, side, or anything like that.
He's correct on opacity.
The max should be the?
It should be max.
Max.
And that, that's an overt, I think that came from Darren as a mistake that we carried forward.
Sure.
Opacity, the more opaque it is, the more solid it is. And the goal was to be able to allow, like, wrought iron fences, like, we have a lot of historical homes, like, you look at Grand Avenue in St. Paul, that have the ability to put a wrought iron fence up that is mostly see-through. And also, the concern was raised, if you're going to spend the money on a decorative fence, a four-foot decorative fence isn't the best look. It kind of can look chintzy. And also, there's the reality that four feet doesn't keep all pets in or out. And in this day and age, large dogs will over a four-foot fence very easily. So as long as it's decorative quality, that's why we landed there.
For the six feet?
Right.
Yeah. And I don't personally think we want to be in the business of telling people that they can't have a six-foot fence if that's what fits their historic home. I mean, I don't know that everyone's going to run out to Home Depot and get a six-foot fence to put in the front yard. I'm not, I mean, it's, to me, I would defer to the planning commission, I guess, that you guys thought through this.
We just, we just want solid vinyl fences in the front yard that no one can see through. You know what I mean? It has to be something where someone could visually see the home, wasn't blocking the view from the road, and it still has all the corner things in consideration, so there's no blockage of intersections. That's called out in there very clearly. So it was mostly, so people put, if they're going to do it, they want a tall fence, they're going to have to spend significant money to do a decorative type fence. So I don't think it's going to happen a lot, is our gut from our conversation.
I think there's going to be other questions as well as kind of go through this and bring to the council. We can certainly, we'll have the final reading presumably on Monday night, but there's can be adjustments made to that ordinance before the final reading on Monday night.
Is that a question?
Yes, just.
To the vote where we voted yes on take, striking out that two-foot setback, to council member Hicks's point about a mutual agreement between neighbors, are we still going to have something in there? So if I want to build a fence, I can't just build it right on a lot line without the permission of the neighbor, or is that just?
As, as we voted right now, it's just struck. It's just a lot line.
Anybody would have the ability to build a fence, assuming, you know, the, everything meets the ordinances in terms of heights and things on the property.
So you don't need the neighbor's consent?
Okay.
Brett?
I mean, most people I look at, they, they look at it as a blessing, because if they want to chain link or do their yard, that's just one side they don't have to do anymore. You know, either they butt right up to it, or they go up to the neighbor and say, hey, you know, my, if I hook up to your fence, as far as, most people wouldn't complain about it.
The glass is half full.
What's that?
The glass is half full.
Yep.
That's right.
Which glass?
Any other questions, comments? We'll, I think we can bring this up for discussion, obviously, on Monday night and make any minor tweaks at that time. But thank, again, thanks, Karen, thanks to the planning commission.
You can be helpful, you got me instead, she couldn't come. So one of us will probably be there Monday night at lunch.
Monday night as well, okay. All right. So we'll bring in that to the council on Monday. Anything else to come before the committee?
Yeah, I've got one thing.
Yeah, Jim.
As most of you know, I'm on the Lakes Service Co-op Board, and, and we have our annual meeting starting this afternoon. It's at Arrowood this year. We didn't have one last year because of COVID, and they weren't going to do it this year either, because usually it's in July when they do it. But in July, they said, yeah, we're going to do it, and they're doing it at this time. Eight service co-ops come together for that meeting. So it's, it's a pretty big deal. And I'm treasurer of the local service co-op. Don't know if, any, many of you know that from that, I'm also on the board of the Minnesota Healthcare Consortium, which is one person from each of the co-ops, and that's our big medical group. And we are switching from Blue Cross Blue Shield this year to Medica. So in January, everything will go through Medica. And it's quite a savings for everybody. And this, the healthcare consortium has really brought rates down for everybody, because you've got more groups, different size groups, and we even have a small group section, so that it, it really works well to keep the rates down. I'm not sure where we are this year for Fergus, but I know that at one point, we needed like about a 9% raise, but because of the group, it was going to be more in the 3% to 4% range. So it, it's considerable. And I'm also treasurer of that group, too, so.
Keep, we're going to reduce it, Mr. Fish.
Sounds like you're in charge of a lot of money.
Yeah. I told my dad one time, I'm, I'm treasurer of a $500 million organization, and he just looked at me.
Two for me, one for them.
All right. Well, thanks for your work on that, Jim. Yes, Scott?
Now that we're into November, I just wanted to remind us of a couple of things. Earlier this summer, we talked about coming back to look at credit card fees. So for the staff, we'd be looking for some kind of an update on that probably in November. And then we also, not so long ago, talked about the money allocated for the RTC work, and we were about due to hear a report on that, too. So our next committee, the whole, it'd be great to hear about both of those things.
Thanks, Scott. Anything else to come before the council?
Leaf pickup today.
Leaf pickup today.
Yeah. We're going to be looking at that and maybe conducting it again next Wednesday, because there's still a lot of leaves in the trees.
Yeah. Okay.
Reminder, on your phone calls, you've got to dial the area code now.
That's a good reminder.
Can't just dial the seven numbers.
Thanks.